The Waste and Street Seeing Committee, and welcome to People at Home. This meeting today is open to the public. It will be webcast and the recording will be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast the meeting. We have received one petition and one public question. Can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Let's do introductions. I am councillor Joe Otten, Member for Dornotley, and Chair of this committee. Mark.
Oh, there we go. I'm councillor Mark Jones, I'm Deputy Chair of the committee. Thank you.
And I'm Mike Chaplin, councillor for Southey Ward on this committee.
I'm Christine Gilligan-Cubber, and I'm a councillor for Hillsborough Ward on this committee.
Councillor Alexi Diamond, Green Party spokesperson on this committee.
Councillor Tim Huggan, councillor for Crookston Crosspool.
Councillor Sue Alston, councillor for Forward.
Thank you. Shall we do officers this side first?
Robert Parkin, Assistant Director for Legal.
Ben Berylford, Head of Street Seeing Services, deputising for the Director of Regeneration and Development.
And Rachel Appleyard, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
Thank you for that. To me, it sounds like the mics are distorting a fair bit. I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. Yeah, that sounds a bit better. Yeah, thank you. Keep an ear out for that. Item one, apologies for absence. I have apologies from Sean May Richards and Tony Dams.
No further apologies.
Okay, thank you. Item two, exclusion of the press and public. There are no items for exclusion of the press and public today. Items three, declarations of interest. Anybody declaring interest? No? Okay. Item four, minutes of the previous meeting. Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. So just on the minutes of the previous meeting, there was a public question submitted by Andy Book, and he's queried an inconsistency in the answer. The minutes are an accurate record of what was said in the meeting, however, officers are following that up for him to get a confirmed completion date on the works that he was querying. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else on the minutes, or can we take those as agreed? Mike?
Yes, yes, Chair. Just on page 15, point 10, four. This is in relation to the Moor Market traders, and the item will come up today. But the reason, my understanding for the reason that we deferred it until the matter, until this meeting, was that we were alerted to the fact that a number of traders had not been consulted at that time, and it was to give more time for more of the traders at the Moor Market to be consulted.
I think it specifically, 10.4.1, where it says, "No alternative was considered." So the 10.4.1 refers to the alternatives to... Yeah, it does seem slightly odd, minutes, doesn't it? The alternative would have been to go ahead with the decision, wouldn't it, on that? And we did consider, well, did we consider that, or did we consider going ahead, or did we just decide not to go ahead without considering going ahead? You know, it depends. I think it's a slightly philosophical question, isn't it? I don't know, Rachel, do you have anything to...
I think if members would prefer clarity on it, I'm happy to amend it to say that the alternative option was to go ahead with the information that was in the report, just to clarify that.
Thank you. That's probably helpful. I mean, on the question of whether traders have had any consultation, I think that was... I'm not sure that was entirely... I mean, I'm not sure that's the view of the council, that there's been no consultation. I think it's the, it may have been the view of some of the traders that they had no consultation. And certainly, the deferral has allowed further consultation with traders, so hopefully that disagreement is resolved today. But we'll, obviously, we'll come to that later in the meeting. Okay. Anything else in the minutes? Can we agree those? I'll take silence as consent of the meeting for agreement of those as a correct record. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have public questions and petitions. We have received one petition with 17 signatures regarding a desire for a postbox to be installed on Tainam Road S5. Is the petitioner here?
No, the petitioner's not attending.
Okay. Well, in that case, the, well, the request here is that, I'll just read it out. "We, the undersigned petition, the council, to support the community in S5 to have a postbox on Tainam Road S5. Postbox is granted within the gift of this committee, they're a matter of the post office." We could, you know, it is within our gift to say we support them in asking for a postbox. But without understanding, you know, their reasoning in some detail, I think it would be premature to do that. So I have offered a meeting with the petitioner to talk about this further, and obviously, we can come back and express our support on a future date. Mike?
Yeah, well, I'm fully in support of this, and I'll declare an interest. This happens to be in my ward, in Southey Ward. But what I would say is that communication, it should be addressed to Royal Mail, not to the post office. It will be in Royal Mail's gift to allocate a postbox to Tainam Road.
Right, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so the question I have is from Roy Morris. Are you here? Right, do you want to come to the microphone? Press the little button to turn it on and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillors, for a chance to speak to you about this. I'm a member of Better Buses for South Yorkshire, and obviously, my main concern is buses, but the relevance of this will come clear, I think, as I go through. But obviously, we're interested in other things as well, not just buses. We're interested in the wellbeing of the city, et cetera. So shall I read the question? Has everybody got it to hand? I'll read, okay. "So, would it be a positive development to publicise the use made of traffic infringement charges?" And then a bit more detail about the question. "What use is made currently of funds collected? Is there a potential benefit in giving a higher profile to these funds and their use? Would such publicity facilitate the development and public acceptance of measures to move towards net zero?" I sent this literally hours before I received the latest Sheffield News email and article in The Star the following day, saying that actually, there was a million pounds going to be dedicated from CAS towards various schemes, and I think that's great. I think that's just the sort of thing we want. But I might have changed the question a bit, but I think it's still relevant, and I think there's still things I'd like to say, if that's okay. The issues are, I mean, I've used the word "traffic infringement", really, some of them aren't infringements, but I couldn't find another word. Basically, I mean, the funding from the CAS, from the Busgate, and I guess the one that's most appropriate here, from parking, and parking fines, parking charges, that sort of thing. And I think I put this question because, in the back of my mind, I mean, I read The Star fairly for my pains, dreadful thing, but I read The Star every day to see what's going on, and looking at The Star, the reputation of the Sheffield council, I mean, I know this isn't true, and I feel all bad actually saying it, but this is the impression you get from reading The Star, not only the articles but the readers as well, that Sheffield council doesn't know what it's doing, it makes all sorts of silly mistakes, like containers in places where they shouldn't be, they're actively trying to destroy the shops in the city centre. I mean, it's ridiculous. There was even one, a month or two ago, one person was accusing councillors of having snouts in the trough. Now, it's absurd, I know that, but there's a perception out there that actually, the things the council are doing aren't positive, and I do think that publicising the use of these funds will, it won't please everybody, there'll be some people who actually be upset by it, because they think, you know, they should be able to drive wherever they want with no problem. But the people who I think actually believe in a better city and understand that the city has got a problem with too much, there's too much balance, there's too much power even in hands of the motorist compared with the cyclist, the pedestrian and the bus user.
Thank you. I think we understand the question, and, yeah, I will stop you there, because I would like to move on. But, oh, yeah, very quickly.
More things. So basically, the thing about, I think they're fine that the measures suggested in the article, in the latest Sheffield News, but I think also, some money has to go towards actually improving the alternative to cars, which is buses. I mean, I would say that, but I do think that, I mean, particularly the parking charges, which I think, I mean, I've got this thing offline that said that there was a profit of four and a half million. Is that possible? I mean, that sounds, but it's from Data Mill North, which I think, it sounds like a... Yeah, and it says that the actual profit during 21, 22 was four and a half million. Now, if that is, if that's correct, and I mean, I'm totally willing to accept that it might be something that I've misinterpreted, then there's considerable money that could be put towards improving the 52A to Wise Wood, to putting more buses on in the evenings, so that every hour rather than every two hours, more buses on Sundays, and I think that's the use that I would want to see, this money, if there is that amount, going towards, and I'd recommend. And I think it would give an alternative, it would give a vision of what the council is doing, which is trying to make the city better.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate, I appreciate, I mean, I've let you go on. You've made a bit of a speech, which, not strictly within the rules, but, you know, I do understand, yeah, it's a provision for questions, but I do understand what you're saying, and the spirit in which the question is asked, that is appreciated. I have a response to read out to you here. I think you've asked the same question to the TRC committee this afternoon, and you may get the same response read out to there.
Yeah.
So that's the way it is. I might comment in addition to this, given what you've just said, but let me read out the answer first. "In terms of traffic infringement charges, the council issues penalty charge notices for civil contraventions of parking, bus lane and clean air zone restrictions. The police also issue fines for some parking, bus lane and other traffic-related contraventions, but the council do not derive any income from those fines. The parking and bus lane penalty charge notices issued by the council contribute towards the overall annual parking account. The council publishes the account annually on its website. The use of the parking account is regulated by section 55 brackets 4 of the Road Traffic Regulation Act 1984 and the Civil Enforcement of the Road Traffic Contraventions (approved devices, charging guidelines and general provisions, England) Regulations 2022. These regulations set out the purposes for which income beyond the costs of running the parking service can be used. That is, provision and maintenance of off-street parking (parking account only), funding public transport, highway and road improvements, purposes of environmental improvement in the local authorities' area. In previous years, services have been spent on highway maintenance. The penalty charge notices for the clean air zone are regulated by part 3 and schedule 12 of the Transport Act 2000, parts 2 and 6 of the Road User Charging Schemes (penalty charges, adjudication and enforcement, England) Regulations 2013. In the event that net proceeds are generated from the scheme over the opening 10-year period, these proceeds would be applied to facilitate the achievement of relevant local transport policies in Sheffield's transport strategy and in the Sheffield City Region Transport Strategy in accordance with the following high-level spending objectives, and these are: supporting the delivery of the ambitions of the scheme and promoting cleaner air; supporting active travel and public transport use; supporting zero emission and sustainable infrastructure and actions in and around the city to improve air quality. A report to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee on the 14th of February 2024 will recommend endorsing the proposal to commit an initial £1 million of CAS, the Clean Air Zone surplus income, to accelerate air quality improvement initiatives around schools and improve air quality for children travelling to school. In terms of publicising the use of any surplus income, council officers brought a public report on the annual parking account to the Waste and Street Seeing Policy Committee in December, with detail on the work undertaken by Parking Services to manage traffic and support bus priority measures. The report to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee on the Clean Air Zone income will be accompanied by a press release, an ongoing communications plan relating to Clean Air Implementation Plan. The council is keen to promote net zero, and measures to increase public transport patronage are an essential strand to improving overall carbon emissions in the city." So, did you, does that answer your question? I think in some respects it does, doesn't it? I think possibly in other respects, it illustrates the challenge in making a positive story out of the positive things that are, that can be achieved with the surplus revenue from the parking account. And also, the one line, there's only one line in there that says in previous years, "services have been spent on highway maintenance", and that is the picture that we are, that we are in, that the money is spent on highway maintenance, which is, you know, money that we have to spend. So it's not correct, I think, if I may, you know, if I may summarise, it's not correct to say, "Look, because there is revenue, there is therefore a pot of money that is available to spend. It's already accounted for in, you know, the council's budgets, and there's a large amount of spend that goes on highway maintenance, and therefore that is quite legally and properly, you know, the money can go towards that. And if we, obviously, we take, put more of the money from the parking account into things like buses, then we have to find the money for the highway maintenance, which is a fixed sum we're contracted to, find that from somewhere else, so it doesn't really solve the problem, it's not really extra money in that sense. However, as I described in the answer, there are measures that are being, you know, are being taken with some of that money, and you're right to raise, you know, the question of whether that's publicised, and, you know, we've said, there are some efforts to publicise that now, whether that gets the kind of cut through you want, you know, welcome to our world in terms of the challenge of saying good things about what the council is doing." So, you know, apologies for requiring that indulgence in extemporising on the answer you've given. You will get the same answer at TRC, so you could possibly add to your question there, any follow-up question you have to this, because you don't have a right to a follow-up question at this meeting, unfortunately. Okay, so thank you for coming, and we'll now move on to the next item. Yes, Christine. Well, oddly enough, the next item is Members' Questions, although you've not submitted it in advance. You want to make a comment on that? Well, it's not really the procedure, but go on, just the one. No, I'm not going to let anybody else in, okay? We're just going to have one comment on this.
You said very early on in your answer, "The annual parking account is published", and I've just been looking for it. I just want to know, where is it on the council website, so members of the public can find it?
Oh, Ben.
It came to the committees, we've published with the committee papers in terms of the fuller annual report, but there's also, as a gentleman pointed out, a data website that the council operates for all our transparency requirements, and it sits on that account. So if you Google Sheffield City Council's Parking Annual Report, it should bring up the data, it should bring up Data Mill North. But I can share that with the committee after.
Yeah, well, let's make sure, you know, let's do some search engine optimisation if we can, and make sure it comes up when people search for it, because, you know... Right, okay, so next item is Members' Questions. We have had no questions submitted by members in advance at the meeting.
Chair, I have a question, if you'll allow it.
What's the procedure here?
Is it an urgent question? It's, I didn't have the chance to submit it before, it feels urgent to me. Very, that's empty.
Rob, can you, this is a new procedure, sorry, Rob, yeah, can you explain what the procedure is?
It is quite restrictive in that there doesn't appear to be a discretion to allow late questions formally on the face of the constitution, Chair.
Right, thank you for that. Okay, so the next item is the Work Programme. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair. So there's been quite a few changes to the Work Programme, which have been discussed at the pre-agenda and pre-meetings, and this is trying to make the agendas more manageable, so there's been some movement to allow for that. And there's three new items and seven amendments. These are set out in part one on page 20. Some items have been moved to the next municipal year, and there's a couple that have been changed to knowledge, sorry, knowledge briefings where this has been appropriate. So any questions, I'll hand over to officers. Thanks.
Mike?
Thank you, Chair. It refers to page 19, Parking Services, Training and Skills Development Induction Programme for this committee. Walk around with a particular focus on one aspect, e.g. street parking and matchday parking. I just wanted to know whether there's been anything in place for matchday parking around the Sheffield Wednesday Ground. It's, I mean, it's against the date, it's listed as part completed.
If I can just tell that, if your question is, "Do you specifically want to do something around matchday parking around Sheffield Wednesday's ground?", then we can arrange a date to do that specifically when there's a home match for Sheffield Wednesday. If the question's more about doing sports on matchday, then yeah.
It is that, yeah. That would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on the Work Programme? It is worth, I just, I would like to point out, just, yeah, go on.
Yeah, I think we need to do work with the Sheffield Food Partnership sooner rather than later. I think it's quite an important thing, and obviously, concerns and knowledge needs to be brought up in this committee about all aspects of the programme. You know, we've had a couple of things come to committee, but we could do with that happening at some point, probably after May, I would say.
I didn't quite catch Tim.
On the Sheffield Food Partnership, and it's all to be confirmed, but I think it needs to move forward at the bottom, after page or waste trials on the bottom of the page of 19 we're talking about, because I think it'd be a good, it'd be good to get that and build up that knowledge about, you know, all the issues surrounding it.
Yeah, okay, yes, can we get that in the diary? Thank you. Okay. I just, yes, so my comment was going to be, just because there's been some interest from the press in the sector establishment policy, there was an intention earlier in the year to try and get a policy to this committee before the elections, that's no longer the case. If it is going to come, it'll be after the elections. There is still the intention, I understand from the service, I don't think we have officers from the service here, to run a consultation within the next few weeks or months on what that policy should say. It is a policy that has had some difficulty over the years. I know it's been, it was battered back by the Licensing Committee some years ago, and it's struggled to make progress since for a number of reasons. But obviously, it's something that many members of the public are interested in. It's also worth saying that we don't have any SUVs in the city anymore, and therefore, it might be seen as less urgent a policy to have, but we ought to have a policy in the event that an application for a new one comes along. Okay, that's just a comment for, yeah, that's just a comment. So anything else on the Work Programme? Or can we take this as agreed? I'll take silence as the consent of the meeting, that Work Programme is agreed. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the review of the Moor Market Service Charge. Can we have, yeah, officers to the table here, do you want to introduce yourself? Thank you. It's worth saying, the paper has been revised, a revised version of the paper has come round to members. The only change I'm aware of is the, a change to the date in clause 1.1.3, which was wrong and is now correct. I'm not aware of any changes to the proposal or the supporting figures, so if you read it before you got the revision, you know, it's still good.
Liam Pond, interim operations manager for City Centre Maintenance and Sheffield Markets.
Ben Berylford, Head of Street Seeing Services.
So, the purpose of the report is to tell the proposal to review the service charge, recharge to the traders at the Moor Market, and the reasons why officers consider the needs to be implemented. As far as the recommendations go, we recommend an approved and increased to the service charge adopted in scenario eight, which would increase the current service charge to the midpoint between the current charge and full cost recovery based on 100% occupancy. If committee approves the recommended increase or any variation on this agree a period of 12 weeks from decision being taken to the implementation of the new service charge, agree further service charge reviews should take place annually for officers to make proposals to committee for moving forwards towards full cost recovery, or if necessary, proposals will be brought to maintain the service charge at that rate, at the time, or the report on reduced the service charge, if appropriate. On a bit of background, the market traders place three separate charges in the Moor Market. There's the rent for the market stall, a utility charge and a service charge that is designed to recover the costs of providing the general services of the market used by all. The service charge represents a cost incurred by the landlord, which is Sheffield City Council, for running and maintaining shared parts of the building or estate which legally the landlord could charge back to the tenants. This report only deals with the costs for the service charge, however, the intention is to bring a future report to committee, which will set out the current rent position and proposals for going forward, and review the impact of the recent committee decision to increase the utility charges by 50%. The purpose of this report is to outline the financial implications and then the recovery of the service charge from the council tenants has created and provides some options on addressing this unsustainable situation. The options set out in the report consider the impact that increasing cost recovery could have on market traders who, due to the energy crisis, the cost of land crisis, are already feeling the impact of other price rises in goods and services without impacting their overall business sustainability. On the current position on costs, you can see the table there in 1.3.1, the current line of the service charge. In total, for the financial year 2021/22, operational costs attributable to the market service charge in the Moor Market was £1,290,000. The amount recharged to traders was £841,000, showing an overall subsidy or a deficit of £448,000. The recovery rate for the financial year was approximately only 65.3% of the actual costs. Cost recovery will never be 100% of the operational costs for the markets, as there are some elements of the market's running costs that are not directly attributable to individual traders, either through the service charge, rent or direct utility costs. These non-recoverable costs are budgeted for separately, however notwithstanding, the above table demonstrates how low recovery now is. As part of mitigations, we've had several structural changes and operational changes over recent years, which means the market team is running as lean and efficiently as possible. It is only through increased tenancies, take-up and reduction in external charges that the service charge could be reduced. Current occupancy at the Moor Market stands at 81%. Despite occupancy figures appearing quite low, the national average for market occupancy stands at 72%, which is figures based from NABMA, which indicates that the market's been performing better in occupancy when compared to the UK average. Changes to the service charge would not be implemented immediately, there'll be a 12 weeks between any decision to change the charge and the charge being implemented. There are no proposals to backdate any historic under-recovery of charges. Should a decision be taken to increase the service charge rate but not fully recover costs, it is proposed that the impact is reviewed with a further performance report to committee on vacancy rates, aged debt and budget position with a view to agreeing a plan on increasing service charge cost recovery until reaching full cost recovery. The table sets out nine scenarios. Scenario one, which is to do nothing, we consider this not a viable option, although officers would actively manage costs as far as possible. Scenarios two through eight, whilst these proposals increase the current service charge rate by varying degrees, they still leave Sheffield City Council subsidising the market traders. And then scenario nine, which is, while this is a significant increase and will result in reduction to the occupancy level, as traders will struggle to absorb the increase without increasing their own prices, it is based on recovering all the costs the council incurs and therefore does not provide a subsidy to the market traders. The recommended proposal is therefore scenario eight, which would increase the current service charge to the midpoint between the current charge and full cost recovery, and that's based on 100% occupancy. However, due to a recent committee decision on the 15th of November 2023 to increase the Crystal Peak service charge by CPI plus 8%, which relates to scenario five in this paper, officers' recommendation would add that this should fall in line as a minimum increase proposed for this decision. As far as consultation, a meeting was held between market management and sold traders on December 1st in the Moor Market conference room. We've also sent out various yoga emails to inform traders that a service charge review will be discussed at upcoming committee. Traders also requested a deferment on the decision at December 1st. Traders also requested a deferment on the decision at the December's committee to allow further consultation. The committee agreed and a meeting was held on 90th of January. In attendance were More Market traders, the Chair and Deputy Chair of the Wastage and Street Scene Policy Committee, as well as Head of Street Scene Services. On risk analysis and implications, equality implications, this would be the first increase in the service charge in 10 years and therefore the impact may be more significant. The recommended increase to the midpoint between the current charge and actual cost will still see a competitive service charge when compared to other retail outlets, and there will be still an ongoing loss to the council from the under-recovery. Discussions have highlighted that some of the traders believe that they're miserable with the service charge increase. As mitigation to this, the council is proposing A, not to immediately pursue full cost recovery, B, give a reasonable period before implementing the new service charge, and C, staggering future increases towards full cost recovery over a number of years. It's highly likely that any increase in costs will be passed on to customers in many cases. The desired outcome is to make the market's budget more sustainable while minimising the risk to traders of becoming unprofitable and to minimise the impact on costs being passed on to customers. The proposed increase is likely to compound other costs, increases such as wholesale prices that traders seem likely to have been experiencing. The cost will continue to increase in line with inflation and the cost of living crisis. On the financial and commercial implications, the market service continues to face significant financial challenges to inflationary pressures which increase the subsidy the council gives to market traders and full cost recovery, if full cost recovery is not adopted. The proposal to adopt scenario eight halfway between the current charge and the full cost recovery will initially recover from traders £1,065,000 and the cost remains at £1.3 million, leaving the council effectively subsidising £224,000. The option of full cost recovery, which is scenario nine, would reduce the subsidy to nil immediately. On the legal implications, the given amounts of the involve, the amounts involved in the subsidy or the proposed grants do not require a subsidy control assessment. There are no significant legal implications that govern the relationship between the council and its tenants, save that the tenant is required to pay a proportion of the service charge properly incurred by their landlord. On the climate implications, there are no significant climate implications arising from this report. Alternative options, considered the option to do nothing, scenario one has been rejected by officers due to the unsustainable nature of the increasing subsidy required on operational costs. The option to move straight to full cost recovery, we anticipate too much of an impact on the tenants. It's likely to create significant cost pressures that are too large to pass straight on to the customers and may increase the market, market's vacancy rates. Other models of recharging the service charge, such as the service charge only tendency agreement, are options that require further work and not being possible to complete in time for the report. The option outlined, the reasons for the recommendation, that the options outlined in scenario eight increase the service charge to the midpoint of the deficit between the current charge and the actual cost.
Thank you, thank you. I think I saw Mark.
Thank you Chair, thank you Liam for bringing the report. I know you've gone through an almost torturous effort to get this to where it is now, and it's very welcome. We, we, we fully acknowledge that the More Market will never have 100% occupancy. And I think that as a city in general, we don't necessarily recognise the importance of the market. During Covid, we know the market couldn't operate because of restrictions, but it did still operate. It was a distribution centre for the city. I think sometimes we don't necessarily communicate our appreciation and our acknowledgement of how important and critical that the More Market and such infrastructure is to the city and its residents. So it is important that we make it sustainable, it is important we make it work and make it amenable to more people. So I know that that's what this report is intended to do, and I really, really welcome that. For me, I, I, I think there is something that we as, as an authority need to do. Just as our fees from fines and such that go to the general fund, there is elements that the general fund should maybe be looking to support the More Market in, in future years. Because one of the questions that we've had constantly, and Joe and I attended that thing with traders, is the anxiety from traders that the 100% recovery element that we have to do to be responsible. But they then feel that if there's only two thirds to three quarters occupancy, they'll be picking up that 100% themselves. Where the unoccupied stalls, it would be better for me if we could do additional work. I know we were doing some, but additional work to try and get stores occupied by council services for information giving. And through doing that, we should then maybe reflect the costs, even though it's a notional accountancy element, that the council is benefiting from this and maybe other departments should be writing off some of those costs because we're using stalls that would otherwise be bringing in income for their own council benefit, and that should be covered in part by a general fund. So I broadly recommend that we, we do, do look to normalise and recover costs because we need to make this work. And also, more than anything, I think it's really important that we go on record to say that we appreciate the efforts that you and your staff are doing. And if we don't fund the markets appropriately, we can't fund your team appropriately, and then we'll be in a downward death spiral that none of us want to see. So I'll leave it at that, but certainly going forward, we'd like to maybe, maybe slightly differently revise the, the terminologies and the phrasing that we use, but also to capture some of those social value elements and capitalise them in terms of pounds and pence for future reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I think, I think it is worth clarifying that even at the full recovery option, we're not expecting traders to pick up the, the, the cost of empty stalls. It's, you know, full recovery means full recovery. Were the occupancy to be 100% effectively is what it means. So.
Thank you Chair. A couple of questions, if I may, about the occupancy. I know you've pointed out it's currently at 81%. Do you, I'm not asking for actual numbers, because I know you won't be able to give me them, but do we know, is that an upward trend, a downward trend, or is it pretty much on the level? And alongside that, how is the turnover? So are we getting a lot of storeholders who are coming in, using the stall for 12 months, whatever, and then leaving? Or have we got a lot of long-term stallholders who are sustaining their businesses? Because it's about sustainability of the businesses, I'm, I'm interested in.
As far as occupancy rates, it is fairly static at the moment. It, it, it tends to fluctuate slightly, but it, it's roughly been around the 81% for the last sort of like three financial quarters. As far as trader turnover goes, we've got to be very careful about occupancies coming in as well because there's a balance of trade that, that we like to keep amongst our current tendencies. So there are certain elements that are doing pretty well, so butchers and fishmongers, you know, we've got a nice balance there of where there's probably enough of each service. So they are more sustainable than, than say, some of the miscellaneous ones that do seem a bit more of a higher turnover. But as far as just maintaining that balance of trade, that's where it's been really important to make sure that the goods on offer are high quality, but we're not having too many selling the same thing, which then leads to more sustainability amongst the businesses rather than, you know, impacting on, on each tendency as it comes. So therefore, more, more on miscellaneous, there is a bit more of a turnover, but certainly on, on goods such as fresh food and, and meat and fishmongers, they are pretty static.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, that, that's actually really quite reassuring. I just want to use this opportunity just to ask, and I think we mentioned the same thing when we had the similar reports around the Crystal Peaks market, about how it'd be really useful to be able to bring all these to the same, all the different market charges at the same time. And I know that's something that we've mentioned before, but.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And I think the last committee where we discussed market charges, we committed to reviewing a market strategy. So we're getting a kind of a full picture. And I think, you know, referring back to councillor Jones's comments earlier, that's where we can also consider about what, what we want from the market for the future, how we approach that as a, as a business. So yeah, absolutely, we, we're committed to doing that, and we'll be setting up a task and finish group in a year to, to do that.
Thanks. Alexi.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for this report. It's got lots of really detailed information. Especially pleased that you put the benchmarking with other local authority, other markets into the appendix, which is really useful. And it just showed that the More Market is sort of competitive and, you know, on the, the outlier in fact is Leeds Kurt Gate Market, which is sort of probably about 75% more, or, yeah, more expensive in terms of rent and service charge. So More Market is, is, is competitive when you look at the other markets. I've just got a few questions as well. So we can see with the, you also provided some really interesting and important additional information about the overall level of subsidy. And I was just wondering why there's such a fluctuation in the service charge in More Market compared with Crystal Peaks Market. I understand that some of that would be now to Covid, but it does seem that the More Market service charge has gone up. So if you take the, the Covid year out, it went up from 11, 111,000, then 200 in 2018, 19, then to 22, 21 is 282,000. And then again, it went up to 418,000 in, in 21, 22. Whereas in Crystal Peaks, the service charge hasn't inflated at anything like that sort of rate. And I'm just wondering what the reason is for that. Is it the way that the More Market is financed and things like that?
Just wanting to, to check, the, the figures we talked about there aren't part of this report. They were kind of a, a question that was circulated to, to Leeds. I'm, I'm just checking if we're all right to.
The, the, yeah, the benchmarking figures, I was just looking for them actually, because they're not in the, the revised version of the paper for this. I think they have been published on the, on the council website, yes, they have. And so they came around in an email, but I don't think they're attached to any of the printed papers right now, which is.
I think the benchmarking data is, but I think what councillor Diamond's referring to is, is a, is a, is a question that came from one of the other committee meetings that was circulated to, to members. But it's not published as part of this report, so I just wanted to check.
Well, Isol, can you clarify what status that, that, those figures are?
I don't know if Rob's best placed to answer that, but it's, it's a report that we've not received. I think it was briefly mentioned at the, the pre-meet, but it, it hasn't formed part of the report. It was just the benchmarking data that got published.
I'm a little bit confused. Is, is, was this part of the report pack but not in the hard copy? So, so it's, is it listed as a background document? No. So is it, is it, is it information that you're able to, to, to confirm exists and is accurate and are able to supply to the committee or refer them to afterwards? So I think it would fall, Chair, down to the officers' confidence in that data and whether or not you feel confident to answer questions or the committee's advised fully.
Yeah, I just want, yeah.
Yeah. So it, it actually led from a question from councillor Diamond on a previous committee that we shared for transparency, once we got a, an answer from our finance team. But based on the way that, that the service charge is made up, we can see that, you know, it did, it did dramatically increase after Covid. But we've had to put in more measures for, for cleaning, for instance, you know, in, in the public toilet space and in the food court because the communal seating areas could buy our cleaning contract. So there is an increase there that's, that's naturally taken place since Covid. There are also other measures that have, that have gone into those, where we've done some responsive maintenance that, that can cost more than, you know, than something that we've anticipated in this forecasting. So, you know, emergency repairs and things like that can also have an effect. But also because there's a third party involved in that, we also pay a service charge to workmen for the service charge area. That can fluctuate the, the service charge as well on our part.
Right, sorry, I was, I was distracted there by the discussion of the benchmarking document. So yeah, the, the, the list of figures I've got in front of me here from the council website for this meeting, under the item that says, no, I wasn't there. Oh yeah, no, here we go. Under the item that says, item eight, review of the More Market Service Charge supplementary information and item nine, parking fees and charges. Which is slightly, slightly, which has one page of the, the supplementary information and then it goes into the, the item nine. That has a list of rents and service charges for a number of markets around the north. That, that, is that, is that what we're talking about here, or is there something else?
It's two things. It was this, this is the benchmarking with other local authorities, which is included in the, the report. The other was some additional information about the level of subsidy to Sheffield Markets since 2017/18. And there's a comparison between Crystal Peaks and More Market included.
Right. And that's an email that's come round, is it?
Yeah.
Right, well, I, yes, okay. Well, I don't, so we, so the advice is we're not, we're not considering that here, is that right?
The advice is, it's really for officers. If they, if they are confident that they can, that, that, that they're able to talk about information which they consider accurate and can answer questions on it, then it would be something that the, the committee can consider. But it does depend on officers' confidence in that data.
Right, I mean, I, there's also the question, it, it, these are public, it's a public papers, and if members of the public haven't seen them, then, then, you know, they ought to be published, haven't they, in order for, for our decision to be, to be publicly understood, is it? It does seem, it does seem a little bit, in danger of murky waters here.
I, I think, so for me, sorry Chair, if I could, can I, so I think the point would be that officers' report is, in their opinion, everything that the committee needs to have to consider the recommendation. What we've got is questions on what might be, in officers' minds, not directly related points, but points that if they're comfortable answering on, they can answer on. However, their broad assertion is that the papers that are before the committee are everything that the committee needs to answer the question about whether the recommendations can be accepted.
Well, as long as I don't have to go and find Alexi's email before I make a decision on this, I'm, 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 I'm quite happy. Tim?
This is slightly different to what Alex has been asking. When you talk about percentage occupancy, because I've, I've noticed when I go into More Markets, I go in quite regularly, that sometimes, like, I had a friend that kept him occupied all afternoon with his, the record fair that there. Is that included in the percentage occupancy or is that additional? So potentially, you can have over 100% occupancy, is that, is that, is that the case? Because I've noticed that the stalls, as you come in on the side, as you, as you, as you come off the, off the more, are they additional space or is that included in the 100%? Or is it this, what we would call the static stalls, is that the 100%? And then the additional space that is sometimes used for other things and can be used for other things could potentially put occupancy over what you would say would be 100%? Is, is that, is that the case?
For the most part, those additional spaces are just used for pop-up traders. So they'll pay a daily fee rather than sign up to any long-term tenancy agreements. So we don't include those in the occupancy figures. We just go on more long-term occupancy, tenancy agreements for the occupancy figures. Additional things such as the record fair that you've just referred to is, is an additional market that we bring in to try and drive more footfall and to try different interests and demographics into the market on the busier days. So predominantly we host it on a Saturday to try and really bulk out the amount of people that we can get into the More Market.
More for our power to help on that. You know, it did keep a friend who'd been here at my house for a few days occupied all afternoon. But the whole point is, is that where does that get included in these, in these figures? Or is that a separate account you ran? Or how, or how do you do, how do you do that?
So we have a separate budget for specialist markets. So any income that's generated from markets separate to any kind of tenancy agreements or anything that's attributable back to the service charge is on a separate budget and it's not recharged as a service charge.
But, but if we, yeah, I know you said it's on a separate budget, but how would it impact on the figures we're looking at now and how we are recovering over long term? I, I'm just, sorry, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head.
I think where does the money go for, for the, for the barrel hires, is what Tim's asking.
So anything from like the specialist markets or barrel hire goes into what we call the specialist market budget? And then that is obviously spread across other things that we have to pay towards. It's not things that are attributable specifically to the service charge.
Right, okay. Does that, does that answer your question, Tim?
So. It does, it does answer my question. It just says that, you know, if we're charging the permanent traders a certain charge of the service charge, which is, you know, the occupancy of the building, if we're then, that's then going elsewhere, then they're, aren't they, the, they, the, the permanent traders, aren't they paying some of that?
Aren't they, yes.
On a different account that's going, that's going somewhere else?
Yeah, it, it's, it's a point. I think we need to, we need to have the figures on what the specialist market budget is doing, is for, and what benefits the traders get from that in order to understand the answer to that question, don't we? And we don't have that in front of us. I don't know if we, do we really want to go into that? I know there's something, very quickly you can say on what that is that would, would satisfy. I know there's something, very quickly you can say on what that is that would satisfy Tim or is it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think what we're looking at here is, we know that the council covers part of the costs of running the Moor Market anyway, and we're not trying to recover everything from the traders through the service charge. So certainly elements of other activity that isn't part of the day-to-day running, that's part of the council's contribution to this specialist market budget. And also we try and income generate from that, but there's costs for us to do that. So any additional cleaning, any additional setting up of equipment doesn't come from the service charge that the traders are paying separate to that.
Okay, thanks for that. I've got Mike and then I'm going to have a question. We'll try and wrap this up after that because we've had a good thrashing. Mike?
Yes, it's following up on Tim's line of questioning. I do think we have to find a way to build this, the specialist markets into the figures. I mean, it's quite clearly that they're taking up slack that we've got with empty stalls in the market. And it is intended to drive footfall, so you would hope that people who've gone there to look at the record stalls might also call in and pick up some fruit and veg or take home some food for their teeth or access other stalls as well. And of course, creating a focus of interest that will draw more and more people in. We can certainly see the benefit of that. I think that there's a worry that if we don't find a way to build it, build the benefits from those specialist markets into the report, that we're not being quite as transparent as we could be. But, I mean, definitely those initiatives are very welcome and anything that helps bring in income so that the council's not having to subsidise the market as much is obviously of benefit to council taxpayers.
Thanks. It strikes me, this is another question for the market strategy we're going to come to in the summer, because we are, by the nature of the decisions we're taking, we're looking at parts of the puzzle, aren't we? We're not looking at the whole picture. Is that fair? Do you want to add anything to that?
I think just to again confirm that, you know, the decision we're taking out of the report today isn't impacted by the other specialist markets or activities that's in there. There are things we'd put in there to drive footfall and as traders will tell you, footfall is something that they really look to. So it's really important that we carry on with those specialist markets, but clearly making sure that the traders aren't picking up additional service charges in relation to those, so additional cleaning, security, things like that are not part of the charges that go into that Moor Market.
Thanks. I have a question. I mean, I'm very conscious that the market needs the cleaning, the security, the maintenance, the marketing, the other services that the service charge pays for, that the market needs those to happen and it needs them to happen. When we met the traders, Mark and I, you know, they needed more things to be, things to be done that weren't, you know, weren't being done to their satisfaction. So I'm conscious that that money has to be spent and possibly we have to spend more. And, you know, there are some issues that they weren't particularly happy with and this, you know, some of that was picked up in the press as well. So my question is, what, you know, when we met them, they gave us a list of issues. Can I ask what progress has been made on addressing those issues?
Yeah, thanks, Joe. You're absolutely right. We're working really hard with services that contribute towards that service charge to make sure that they're providing efficient and effective services. So we've got meeting set up with the cleaning team that do the cleaning that's recognising the service charge to have a look at what other options we've got there in terms of improving quality of service. We've got maintenance quotes coming in now for some of the larger items that traders had recognised. We're looking a little bit tired and ready for refreshing and we're working hard with our finance and FM colleagues in terms of the longer term plan. This market has got a sinking fund that allows for the ongoing maintenance of major items and that's kind of coming to the fore. So we're committed to sharing that with the traders so they're really clear about where we are in terms of the replacement of those major items. We've picked up on the maintenance items that we refer to us and again, we're sharing that with the traders in terms of progress and we're working hard on driving the efficiencies from the services that we receive from security and cleanliness. So it's an ongoing picture, but one that we're providing real kind of focus and attention to make sure that we achieve what the traders require around that.
Thanks for that. I am conscious that we stopped making contributions to the sinking fund as a budget saving in this year's budget. So if we start spending that fund, we're going to have to restart those contributions, aren't we? It's a budget headache for us as much as anything. Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any proposals? Sue?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to propose that we adopt scenario five, which is the CPI plus eight, rather than a higher number, particularly because I think these provide a very valuable service and I'm conscious that obviously some of that charge may end up being passed on to their customers. So, yeah, that's my proposal.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm happy to second that suggestion from councillor Holston. She's quite right. We are not necessarily tying ourselves into a three-year ongoing raise. We are looking at potentially getting to a full economic recovery within three years, but we'll be able to review that next year and the subsequent year on the impact that has on the markets and its occupancies. So, yes, I'd second that. Thank you.
Thank you. I propose to put that to the vote then. Alexi?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I think, yeah, it's important to note that the value of the Moor Market and our markets in Sheffield generally, they provide a really vital service, especially to communities that use it also as a social space as well as somewhere where you get food. So it is really important to recognise the importance of the markets and to keep that occupancy level as high as it is. However, I would say that has the Moor Market in particular received 3.6 million subsidies since twenty seventeen to eighteen. So, and it continues to be my view that any subsidy should be provided of that, sorry, that was eight hundred and sixty seven thousand of that was the service charge. And it is my view that subsidies should be provided by rent rather than, and we should move towards that. And going forward, I think we need to increase our investment in bringing prices down permanently through any retrofixing or energy-saving measures that we can do to benefit the traders. But having said all that, because of the increase that we gave to the Crystal Peaks market, I think we need to be consistent and we'll also support that option five.
Thank you. Mark, you?
Yeah, I was just going to question whether there's an alternate suggestion there because we'd obviously moved to the vote, but you're not really pointing forward an alternate suggestion.
I think there wasn't in the end. You indicated when it sounded like there was going to be one, didn't you, Mark?
Yeah, so I guess we move to the vote, as Chair.
So can I see, well, is that agreed? Can I take silence as a consent of the meeting to councillor Holston's proposal? Yeah, okay, so that is agreed, that we want to take scenario five. So the recommendations with that, I don't know if you need a form of words in terms of how that is built into the final decision, Rob, or if it's clear, if I now say the recommendation's subject to that agreement, that we can agree that?
Yeah, I think it's clear from the approval there that you're opting to go with scenario five, so you can craft that into a formal words in the record.
Okay, thank you for that. So can we agree the recommendations in this report alongside, you know, subject to the alteration made by the proposal we've just agreed to adopt scenario five? Is that agreed? I'll take silence as the consent of the meeting. Right, thank you. That is agreed. The next item is the parking fees and charges. So we already know who you are, Ben, but Sabia, if you wanted to introduce yourself?
Thank you, Chair. Sabia Hany for Parking Services Manager.
Thank you. Do you want to introduce the report?
Yeah, just before I introduce the report, there's a slight amendment to the report. So if you refer to appendix A and B, we've got some short-stay car parks, which are four car parks, Carver Lane, Devonshire Green, Milton Street, West Street Lane. It says all day, but it's a maximum stay of six hours. And the next slight amendment is the Wickelane car park. Rather than up to one hour, it's up to two hours, the daily charge, which is eighty five pence, what we're proposing at the moment, it's ATP.
Sorry, just to be clear, this is an alteration you're making to the altered paper?
To the appendix, yeah. It's just a slight change. Rather than saying all day, it's supposed to be a six hours maximum stay for the four car parks.
Right, okay, so.
Yeah, it currently stands at six hours maximum stay and that's what, we're not making any changes to that, but I think in the report it says all day.
These are all six hours, all the ones that are in yellow effectively or in grey in mine?
No, you haven't got that. That's just flagging it up today. So Carver Lane.
Go, Carver Lane, so Carver Lane, sorry.
Yeah, so in that box, Carver Lane, Devonshire Green, Milton Street, West Street Lane, those four car park sites.
Yeah, they're six hours.
Yeah, their maximum stay's six hours, not all day.
And that's not a change because it's.
It's not a change. It's still currently six hours and it's going to remain at six hours.
Okay, and all right, so, and was that, and was another change or was that?
Yeah, another change is Wickelane, the one that's already highlighted in yellow.
Yeah.
So it's not one hour, it's up to two hours that day, hourly charge. So at the moment, it's ATP, we're proposing eighty five P up to two hours.
Two hours, okay. And then, okay, now that makes sense. Sorry, the, right, yeah, and that's Sundays as well, eighty five P for two hours.
Yeah, that was already mentioned, that was already changed, amended, wasn't it?
Yes, but it says eighty five P per hour, again, it says per hour again on the Sunday, so that's two hours now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Right, okay. Are members clear what's happened here and are you referring in the first place to the revised Item nine that has the Wickelane in yellow as opposed to the original Item nine? Can we just check members have got the right version? If the difference is, the version in the, in the original pack, if you've got that, if I can find, doesn't have the Ebenezer Street to Wickelane section highlighted in that appendix. Oh, no, sorry, there isn't, it was to follow in the original pack, wasn't it? So, yeah, okay. Right, okay, so do you want to carry on then? Thank you for that.
Thank you. This report reviews the charges for parking payments, paid suspensions, parking dispensations and parking tariffs. The proposed changes will help to better manage parking demand and contribute to wider traffic management and environmental objectives. So the recommendations are listed there. And just to give a better background, last time the parking fees charges were reviewed in June twenty twenty two and they were all parking fees that were reviewed at the time. So what the proposal, what we're proposing this time is the proposed tariffs for the city centre on street, appendix A, it sets out what the current and the proposed tariffs are. It's generally accepted that parking occupancy rate is between sixty and eighty percent is optimal. This means that although the area is busy, a driver seeking a space will not need to look far before finding one. Demand for parking services within the city centre has not reduced since June twenty twenty two and there remains a greater pressure on the curbside parking than ever before. And what we've done is also used some quite a lot of data. So we've looked at our two back office pay-by-phone data and the pay-and-display machine data to look at the transaction, just to understand the utilisation of the spaces. So we've picked quite a sample of list of locations within the city centre for on-street and we also done a parking survey as well, just to understand, from our data, we can find out what the pay-and-display charges are. But the parking survey that was done on on-street, it was to give an indication what other parking restrictions were there, so like your green permits and your blue badge. So that's also fed into this proposal as well. So that was on-street. Also, we've got the proposal for the off-street as well. That's indicated in the appendix A. And then also in your appendix B is gives you all the permit prices as well for the recommendations. Part of this report was that we considered all the implications that we've considered as well and the recommendations are listed there. If anybody's got any questions.
Alexi?
Yeah, so thank you very much for the report. Again, there's lots of detailed information in there and I also found it particularly useful, again, the benchmarking with other local authorities. I do unfortunately think that there's a missed opportunity here. It's vaguely a political point rather than to the officers, but since declaring a climate emergency in late twenty eighteen, we've only managed to have three percent reductions in our carbon emissions. And a big proportion of our emissions, I think twenty-six percent if I remember correctly, is from transport in the city. And this is another opportunity. The report references modal shift a lot of time, but unfortunately, there's not strong enough actions or options here to actually have a modal shift away from cars. I don't think that the proposed tariffs increase are substantial enough to encourage people to use alternative forms of transport. I think more could be included in the report to say that we could actually use the income from parking to invest in, or subsidise in public transport and investing in active travel. I did consistently argue in briefings and requested that other options for further increasing parking charges to be included in the report, but there was no support from this from the other political groups. So, you know, I don't think it would have been a good use of officers' time necessarily to include it, especially given the circumstances that have been made aware of in terms of difficulties from the, getting answers from the finance team. But another thing I feel that should have been an option in the report and an outlier that Sheffield is, with other local authorities, is our Sunday charging raging. So you can see in the benchmarking there, like, what we get income from parking or parking charges on Sundays is a real outlier with other local authorities. So I think there should have been an option to either abolish that or phase it out more quickly. And just on five point two in the report, I think it's page seventeen, and it said the council could make higher and more widespread increases in tariffs, but with the information available, these are not thought to be appropriate proportionate to achieve the aims of the probe. Well, I'm just wondering what is the information available because, you know, because of, I mean, there's like the IPCC report, the transport plan, Sheffield's commitment to net zero, the fact that more money for parking could increase enforcement, which would impact road safety and help us reach our vision zero of road deaths and improvements in air quality. So I'm just wondering what was the information available that sort of suggested that these charges of only, these minimal charges, just in line with inflation, would achieve the desired outcomes in terms of modal shift compared to increasing charges further?
I think just on that kind of final point in the report, I think it's really important to say that, you know, this hasn't been done in isolation. The analysis around demand, around modal shift, around impact that pricing will have has been carried out in conjunction with colleagues in Transport Services, specifically transport planners that are involved in the strategic transport plan that the city's got. So I think, you know, we've taken a steer from them in terms of their recommendations and the review of the data they've pushed. I think clearly if colleagues in transport had felt that additional charges were required and would support with that, that the impacts of the transport plan, they'd have proposed those further forward. So I think, you know, they've got a good sight of all the kind of feed into the transport plan, the impacts of the various issues that we're dealing with in terms of bus patronage, active travel, other schemes that are coming forward, and they feel that these are the right charges. And they feel that these are the right charges to bring forward to support the wider transport plan. So I just want to be clear, this hasn't been done in isolation by a parking team without regard to that wider transport strategy and transport plan for the city. It has been considered as a whole.
Thank you Ben. So from that answer, it does seem that really if you want to make a, a decision on this, it's really the advice of the transport. And surely this sort of decision should fall within the remit of the Transport Committee because it's, it's about a transport policy. And if you, if you want to move towards, you know, net zero by twenty thirty, then these are political decisions which should be taken by the Transport Committee in a joined up way. I take what you said about it's not made in isolation. However, you know, we, we are deciding on something in this committee where really I think it should be in another committee.
I, I, I object to the suggestion that it's not a political committee, Alexi, I've got to say. I don't see, I don't see how the Transport and Redaction and Climate Committee have any, can, can, can claim any, any, any greater authority or, or ambition or anything like that. So when it comes to, when it comes to net zero and climate change. But you may take another view, of course. Ma, sorry, can't, did I write Mark or Mike there? Go ahead.
Yeah. Though I have some sympathy for what councillor Diamond's saying, I think there is a bit of ignorance in some of his suggestions and a misconstruing of evidence. Buses and taxis are contributing and they're not covered by the parking strategy. We are looking to get electric fleets because we already know that the retro burners on buses have failed to reduce nitrous oxide bits. This does sit with transport and I think that it's really unfortunate that we shouldn't be playing politics with this and looking to commit war on parking and on drivers. They will need to be part of our solutions going forward. Electric cars are obviously driving less air pollution, although the manufacturing of electric cars still takes carbon. So I think we do need to steer away from politics in some of this element. We do need to look at what's best for the city and, and I'm not entirely sure that the conversations as to who has subsidiarity over these decisions is within this committee. We've already got the governance committee ongoing and we've consistently raised our frustrations that we may be implementing policies that all the committees will be directing us towards. So I, I, I don't want to heap onto you guys pressures that's unfair. Because you're here to look at how we can manage parking and regulate traffic movements through our city, not necessarily do other things at this stage. So though it is a broader conversation, I, I don't think it's fair for you guys to, to do this. I do kind of see the logic behind the normalisation of Sunday parking to weekday parking because our city centre is being used consistently. It's not just a case of people coming to work or people just coming to buy stuff at the weekends. So we, we recognise that. I know there's inconsistencies within that. But one point eight talks about delegation of authorities and such like where you can make changes. I'm not sure we can necessarily make too many changes to what some of these elements are because I think we'll need to vote on them. But I recognise that, it's just the inconsistencies we, we regret and would like to see addressed going forward. But otherwise, I, I do welcome this and I do understand that we do need to make our parking offer more, more consistent. We would like to see some, some better measures going forward and better understanding of why cars are circulating, why bays aren't becoming available. However, we do also widely support the fact that blue badges are not being attacked and targeted. Alternative provision for those people with disabilities to get into the city centre needs to be protected and we welcome that absolutely. I think the whole committee does. I don't think that's a political points going thing that we'd want to go down. But yeah, we, we welcome this report. We see that we do need to normalise Sunday to every other day as society is changing and it recognises that. We'd just like to see some of the anomalies tackled going forward. But other than that, thank you for the report and thank you for your work.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you Chair, thank you, thank you for this report. I have a couple of questions. My first question is, is just a, a real, just a query, it doesn't directly relate to the decision. And then also want to make a few comments about Sundays. So the first question is, how many people now are using the electronic methods of paying for car parking? As opposed to using coins? And the reason I'm asking for that is that I suspect on the rare occasion when I use a parking meter, it's never charges me ninety p, it's always a pound because they don't give change. So there must be other people like me who are overpaying all the time. I don't suppose there's any way of working that out, but I just raise it as a comment. The other thing is around Sundays. I have a real concern because there are a lot of people who, for whom Sundays is their best day to come shopping because they have jobs. There are also quite a lot of people who actually work in the city centre on a Sunday because the shops are open, the cinemas open, et cetera. And yet we have virtually no bus services from large parts of the city to get here on a Sunday. So I think we are penalising those people. And whereas, yes, in an ideal world, I would love them all to cycle and walk from Chapel Town, that's not really feasible. And there are no buses. So I think we need to bear that in mind when we're looking at the parking on Sundays. I would love there to be lots of buses for everybody to use and for them all to use them if they live some distance from the city centre. But the reality is they're not there at the minute. So I think we have to bear that in mind when it comes to the charging.
Yeah, if I just pick up the first question about, since Covid, before Covid, prior to Covid, the online transactions by like pay by phone or even card payments, we were looking around about fifty percent. And then it went up to seventy percent and just last quarter it's increased to eighty percent. So it is going upwards, the trend compared to the coin levels. Because we see it as cashless, that also does include the card payments like the pay and display meters as well that people use as well as a coin.
And then just on the, on the Sunday charging. I think last time charges were reviewed, there was a commitment to, to start looking towards equalising charges to Sunday compared to the Monday and Saturday charges. Saturday again is a, is a leisure day. And, you know, we've got the same charging regime on a Saturday that, that we have for the rest of the week as well. So I think looking at Sunday as being a leisure day in the city centre and equalising, that's the, the right approach. But I, I do appreciate that there are challenges around public transport on a Sunday compared to the rest of the days of the week. And I think that's why this report is looking towards parity on some of those, but doesn't quite reach that. I think it's important in some of the benchmarking data that's been supplied to show that some of the private operators, again, you know, will still be cheaper on our off street car parks and lots of private operators in the city centre. So we're still providing a better value for money options should members decide to take the decision and increase charges on Sunday in line with what's proposed in the report.
Have you finished that Sue? Okay, I've seen, I've seen Alexi, I'm going to come in before Alexi Cummins has a second go. Just actually on that, on that last point, it does strike me that, that it is a bit unfair for the cash payers, isn't it? That, that, that the app users can always pay the correct amounts. And okay, if you've got a pound, I don't, I'm not saying the machine should give, give change. But if you want to pay ninety p for an hour and you put a pound in, you should at least get your extra one ninth for an hour, shouldn't you? You should get one hour, six minutes and forty seconds, I've worked it out. Why, why don't we give people an hour and six minutes and forty seconds when you put a pound in?
The, the ability of the machine to, to, to calculate and provide that is, is not functionally available. And obviously we buy these off the markets, we have to work with what the, the market can provide.
I'm sure there are some regimes that do give you an accurate, you know, is it, is it just the brand that we've used, don't they? Is it just the brand or is it, I mean, I mean, machines able to do arithmetic is, is something that was invented by, by Charles Babbage, wasn't it, back in the day? I mean. Oh, okay, well, I, I just, I, I do think that's unfair. And I think if we can, if we can be fair to the cash payers, just by giving them the time that they've paid for, I think that would be, that would be marvellous. I will leave officers to, to go away and, and have a think about that. My comments, so I just want to say, thank you for doing the parking service. I think it's been really useful and really important and puts, puts all of this in, in gives it some context that we needed to, needed to see in order to do, to do it. I was slightly nervous that, that the paper version that I've got for some reason stops at eighty p. But the papers that are over there do go, go through all the appendices and I, of course, I have seen them, I've got them on my computer. What concerns me from the surveys is the, the number of locations that are basically at a hundred percent occupancy in terms of, in terms of parking, parking meters. Particularly Matilda Way, parallel to the moor, seems to be, is just the sort of place you can imagine people want to go to, go to a shop in the moor for, for ten minutes or half an hour. Highly convenient place to park and if it's always full, then people are always going to try it and then have to drive somewhere else. And that's not what we want, we don't want that extra vehicle movement. And particularly provision for blue badge users, I can imagine lots of blue badge users will want to, want to go, they will need to go somewhere that close to where they want to get. And if it's always full, then that, that service isn't available to them. So what I would like to suggest, and this would be an additional recommendation, would be that we have a look at, well, we have a look at two things. One being the green permit scheme, because the green permit scheme on the survey we have here is accounting for a lot of, in a number of places, quite a lot of the usage of on street parking. But in that location, it's a majority of the use of, of on street parking. And I do think the green permit scheme, though it's a good scheme to encourage the use of, of cleaner vehicles, it is possibly too generous when it comes to on street parking. And therefore I would like, and whether that's for ourselves or TRC to go away and make a, you know, and what, officers can bring back a recommendation either to ourselves or TRC, whoever, whoever it needs to go to, to say, can we limit the time on street that you can, you can use a green permit for? Not least to make efficient use of that space and to give a decent service to blue badge users who do need those spaces. The other thing I think we need to look at is the, the exact zoning. I think some of the, some of the meters are in the wrong zones. I think that the, the zone one around the bottom of the moor probably ought to be zone two. And then there are probably a few locations that are in zone two that want to be in zone one. And it's a, you know, I don't, don't want to say exactly what because it's a piece of work that has to be done. And I'm not, and it's possibly that we need another zone for places like Matilda Way because they are so, so heavily in demand. So what I would like to propose is those two items are taken away by officers and proposals brought back either to ourselves or TRC. Is that something within our power to do without knowing exactly where it would go, Rob?
Yes, I think you can, you can invite, sorry, Joe, you, you, you can ask officers to examine and, and report to the appropriate committee.
Okay, yes, thank you, thank you. Mark, Mark, Mark.
We'll, we'll change our names at some stage. Call me John, it'll be easier. In sections one point sixteen point three and one point sixteen point four, there is reference to the modification of the green permit parking fees. And, and I think it is looking at the removal of, of the benefits of that within this report. But it is obviously not carried in the recommendation elements, it's kind of as part of the main body. So I think it would be useful to see those parts of one point sixteen point three and one point sixteen point four brought into the recommendations so we can actually make sure it gets elevated into, into an action rather than just something we consider.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank, thank you Mark. Tim.
Yeah, the green permit scheme, I think that does need, because it must cost the council money to just do the administration. And it's just, and it's, it's one of these things that does add congestion, et cetera. And I don't, I don't think it's, it's viable, it needs to be looked at at the earliest opportunity. I'm also concerned about normalisation of parking charges on Sunday, just, I mean, I was trying to look at my phone last time I parked in the town Sunday because I rarely ever do it. I mean, it wasn't on my new phone, so it must be at least three or four months because I was walking. But the whole point is, there are no buses for people who are further afield on a, particularly on Sundays. And so until the bus service, it's chicken and egg really, till the bus service is sorted out so that people actually can viably get in on a Sunday. Because there are some people who all work and shift patterns vary so much these days that they can probably use the bus most days and then on a Sunday, if they're working, just happen to be working on a Sunday, they can't get in. Suddenly they're, they're marooned unless they drive. And that's something that needs to be dealt with as, as a regular, you know, so there is a, so the bus service, that we look at that. So, you know, there, there is a viable bus service and then we can't, we can't do the regular, you know, to look at the two regularisations or merging the Sundays to the charges over time to the, to the rest of the week. Until we actually have a seven day bus service that is regular timely, you know, regular timing and actually serves all the people of Sheffield.
Yeah, thanks for that, no, I, I agree with that. So can I, can I just check, my, my recommendations from a moment ago, they agreed? That, that, that we asked for pieces of work on the, on the green permits and on the zoning? Is that agreed by the meeting? Can I, Mark? Yeah, Alexi?
Yeah, agreed, I'm sorry to come back.
Right, okay, I, I do have your name still from, from earlier. Yes, okay, well, if that is agreed, yes, okay, go, go ahead, Alexi.
So I think, I wasn't arguing at all that this wasn't a political committee. I was just making the point that everyone has subsequently made that it would be useful if, you know, we could make the decisions relating to what we're discussing here. But actually we can't because it's for TRC. So green permits, we all accept that they increase circulation in the city centre. So they increase congestion, they make traffic accidents more likely, they increase air pollution, not because they're circulating, but because of all the other cars that are circulating or are emitting CO2 and other gases. And yeah, just on that, that would make sense for it to be in the same committee as TRC. So we're going to make a recommendation that they consider it again, but they might not consider it again. And on the, the second point that's been made around buses in, on Sunday, that's another argument for having all these decisions being made at the same place. And, you know, the answer to no buses on a Sunday is not to keep the free parking because we've got twenty nine percent of people in Sheffield, I believe, that don't have access to a car. That's rising to fifty or sixty percent in the most deprived areas of Sheffield. What, where, where's the fairness for them? You know, they, they're just completely stranded on a Sunday and keeping the free parking is not going to do anything for them. So the equitable thing to do was, would be to use the income that we have from parking to do something like subsidise buses or free buses. You know, we did, we, we actually did that in our committee. We made a recommendation to TRC that rather than having the free Christmas parking offer, we had free buses. And that is the sort of thing that we should be doing as a council if we're really wanting to move towards net zero. If we're really serious about a modal shift in net zero, you know, we need to be prioritising public transport over private car use. Thank you.
Mark, thank you Joe. One, one thing I'm anxious of is I, I don't want to see us abdicating our right to influence parking fees and such like and hand that over to transport. What I would like to see, if possible, is an alternative to what you're saying. And, and this addresses a lot of the stuff with why we're in a committee system now. We're in a committee system now because it's our city argued that very few number of councillors were making decisions on stuff that affected the city. By sending it to a single committee, you risk effectively replicating that. Whereas where we've got stuff like the sexual entertainment venues, we are working across committee. So I think that to have better cross committee cooperation, yes, it's not perfect now, but that's not a reason for us not to strive for that. I think it would give more voice and more input from all councillors if we, or, or at least a greater pool of councillors so we can get better policies. So I'd like to see greater cooperation on those integrations of those travel. And I, I get that officers are doing that, but members aren't doing that. So it's not the officer corps that's failing in that respect, it's the political corps that are getting it wrong. So I'd like to see it work more cross committee rather than just us passport stuff onto someone else and say it's not our problem. Because, because we're all eager to find answers to that. So I think, I think that'd be more productive in that respect. But yeah, broadly speaking, we need to have a better joint up thinking on this for sure.
Thanks, yeah, no, I, I gotta say, I do take the point, I've argued, I think at governance before, that we ought to have a transport committee and an environment committee. And in general, we should all, all committees should have one, one word names rather than these three letter acronyms. And then people might know what, what was meant to go where a little more reliably. But we are where we are, aren't we? Just to go back to the, the, the Sunday charges, look, I, I am not, I, I, I'm not convinced that, that it's, it's correct to, to align Sundays with the rest of the week and to therefore to make this move in that direction. direction. I think the, it's no good saying, look, if we put the charges up then the buses will be good and people will use the buses, we all know that, that is wishful thinking. We need to offer people, we need to offer people a good bus service before we try and push them onto the buses. So I would be against the Sunday part of the proposals here and I would, I propose holding a vote to remove that. The other issue with the Sunday charges as they stand is that they do introduce an anomaly in that the evening rate in zone one allows you from four thirty to park for two hours, park for the rest of the evening for two pounds on a parking meter, Monday to Saturday. There's no proposal here to bring in the evening rate on the Sunday and therefore we are proposing to charge more for parking on a Sunday evening than we are the rest of the week. I do think that is a mistake and I think people when they find themselves having to pay a lot more than they planned for, planned on a Sunday evening will be justifiably unhappy about that. So I think that the Sunday thing hasn't been properly thought through and I suggest we push the Sunday thing back. Of course, we are agreeing a delegation to officers to make inflationary increases. So I, my feeling is if we reject the Sunday proposals we have in front of us, it will still be possible for officers to put through, and you know, I'd be quite happy for them to put through, an inflationary increase on the Sunday charges. So we've had some discussion of this, are there any further comments people want to make on, particularly on the Sunday thing, or can I put that question to a vote? Okay, can I, so.
We can vote in part.
Yeah, no, well explain what you want to do, Mark.
Because there's two elements here, there's the normalisation of Sunday rates to all other days, which is something you're arguing against, which is fine. The thing is also about the anomalous element of the Sunday evening parking rates, which is somewhat kind of separate to that normalisation because if it's anomalous, it's not all normalised. So though I'd want to see the normal, the regularisation of Sunday parking to match and be consistent with Monday to Saturday, the anomaly I'd like to see removed. So I'd love to, I'd vote to support the removal of the Sunday evening anomaly but not the removal of the increase of Sunday to make it more consistent with the weekday, if possible.
Is it possible?
So anything's possible to consider provided it's lawful and financially within the envelope as officers, the procedure is that there's a formal proposal to amend that it's seconded and then it's seconded and then you take the vote on the amendment. That's probably the neater way if there's disagreement in the room. If there's clear consensus to the change, then we could probably avoid that procedural step, but if there may be differences of opinion in the room, then the orderly way of sorting it is to have the proposed amendment seconded, understood and debated, then voted upon and it may form, if it's agreed, it forms part of the substantive set of recommendations. If it falls, then we revert to the original.
Okay, so this is, the short answer is that this is in the scope of an amendment. Okay, thank you. Sue?
Yeah, can I just ask for some clarity? I mean, the actual charges in appendix A on Sunday that you've recommended are still the same, are still lower than those for the rest of the week. So is that what we're voting on even though they will have increased? Whereas in the, in the words basically, it says that we should be moving to parity, which isn't what the actual charges do. And I do think that we shouldn't do that even if we thought, you know, otherwise we thought we should until we've sorted out this anomaly around the evenings.
Yes, I think my understanding, my reading the paper is that the principle of moving to parity was a narrative explanation for the actual proposals which move towards parity but don't get us all the way there. Is that, yeah, I'm getting odds on that. So you don't need to amend really the principle, I mean, that's, it's just, yeah. But, okay, so it sounds like, the answer, Mark, is yes, you can propose that. It's obviously, it's different to what I've proposed. So can, well, let me vote on my proposal first if I have a second there. Thank you, Tim. And then if that falls, then we can move to your proposal, shall we do that? My proposal is not to accept the Sunday changes in the proposals at all, but recognising that officers can put an inflationary increase on Sundays. Okay, so can I see those in favour of that proposal to reject Sundays? Yeah, okay. And against? And that, okay, so that falls. So, Mark, your proposal is to add a Sunday evening tariff that is the same as the Monday to Saturday tariff? Okay.
To remove the overcharge on Sundays.
Is that, is that clear enough for everybody? Okay, okay. Can I see all those in favour of that? I think we'll accept that at this point, yeah. Okay, that's, that's clear, right. Are there any other amendments or additions to be made to this paper? We do, but I wanted to check, we didn't want to alter it any more before we did that. Ben, did you, yeah?
It's not a change to the paper, it's just so members are aware that there are parks fees included in this paper and just to be clear, any changes to the car parking fees in our charitable parks will still have to go to our charities subcommittee for ratification. So it's just for members to be aware of that.
I appreciate that and presumably non-charitable parks have to go to CPL, do they, for their charges or, no, okay. Oh, that's, yeah, Mark?
Joe, do we need to get clarification on the revision of the zonal element of the parking reviews or is that just a recommendation for future reports?
It's a recommendation for a piece of work to be done, isn't it? So I think that, I think we're clear about that, aren't we? Yeah, okay, thank you for that. Rob?
Yes, I think you've just dealt with it, the point I was going to make, which was the additional, I think you suggested an additional part of the recommendation, which was for officers to work together with their transport colleagues to examine and review the green permit and zoning schemes and report findings to the, and any recommendations for action to the appropriate committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, and obviously that can give rise to potentially a working group between the committees etcetera, so that's clear enough.
Thank you, that's clear enough. So, okay, so the recommendations are, as in the report, with the addition of the Sunday evening tariff and with the addition of the request for a piece of work to be done on the green permits and on the zoning, the on-street parking zoning in the city centre. Is that agreed? I'll take silence at the centre of the meeting, okay, thank you, that report is agreed. The next item is the capital strategy.
Could we request a comfort milk break?
Yeah, let's have a five-minute break, resume at quarter to twelve, thank you. We're on, thank you, thank you, welcome back. I hope people at home had a, been, had a chance to make a cup of tea. The next item on the agenda is the capital strategy. Ben?
Thank you very much. So the purpose of the report is to set out the key priority areas for capital investment for the Wasting Street See Policy Committee and it provides an overview of potential projects and priorities for the years 2024 to 29, together with an overview of anticipated developments and challenges up to 2052. So the committee has been asked to endorse the general approach to inform the council's overarching capital strategy. So the council by law must have a requirement for a capital strategy that sets out a high-level view of how capital investment, financing and treasury management contributes to provision of services and provides a overview of the associated risks and how they are managed. So the council's capital strategy takes a thirty-year view of the capital investment with a detailed five-year capital programme and this includes a ten-year investment pipeline setting out potential projects that we should prioritise for external funding. This report sets out recommendations in relation to the element of that capital strategy, related to the functions of the council that are the responsibility to Wasting Street See Policy Committee. The council is moving towards a rolling capital strategy which does not simply reflect a fixed point in time and it's therefore proposed the Wasting Street See Policy Committee reviews its capital strategy regularly over the course of a year so it considers emerging pressures and funding streams. The proposed projects for the coming year and the long-term forward log are set out in appendix one. In terms of equity implications, it's important to note that equity impact assessments will be conducted for all endorsed proposals within this report as they are brought forward through the usual capital approvals process. The financial and commercial implications again will be done as things are endorsed and approved for the capital approvals process. In terms of legal implications, again, the implementation of specific proposals outlined in the report will require further decisions in due course should be approved and progress. Again, climate impact assessments will also be done as the endorsed projects progress. So members are asked to note the unsustainable financial position highlighted by the medium term financial analysis presented to the Strategy and Resources Committee in September 2023 and the report, its recommendations, sets out capital projects can continue to be developed and delivered despite the limited resource. In terms of the appendix, it sets out projects already completed in terms of musical pocket park, flat open graffiti prevention, ongoing projects around city centre safety and then the potential investment pipeline over the next ten years, which relate in the majority to safety measures and to waste recovery.
Questions, comments? Christine?
I just have a question for clarification because I don't understand it, so I apologise. A lot of them say, for example, let's take the first one, Veolia Capital, but borrowing costs may be higher than SCC, I don't really understand what that means. What borrowing and who's borrowing and what's SCC got to do with it? Can you just explain that to me please?
So, so in terms of the potential funding sources, so this is kind of looking at where we might potentially fund this requirement of this project from. So in terms of this, he's looking at whether Veolia's capital is an option, but acknowledging their borrowing costs might be higher than the council, so if we've got Veolia.
But we would get better borrowing, you're saying?
Use your mic.
So, yeah, so if I've understood that, you're saying that SCC could borrow the money more cheaply than Veolia?
Potentially, but I think it's important to note in the financial implications that all of these, should they be endorsed, need further financial implications work, so that's what's been indicated, but also we'd have to do that work to bring that back as we progress those further.
Mark? This is one that's often occurred to me, it follows on from the previous question. Where the council borrows to acquire fleets for different waste stream collections and such like, do we then effectively charge Veolia monies because we're supplying them with a fleet, because we're procuring it, we're handing it to them, off you go and used? And do we then make monies from that because most commercial agreements would do so?
Unfortunately, I don't have access to the details of the commercial agreement between ourselves and Veolia to be able to answer that. What we can do is obviously go away and clarify that point and respond after.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I don't think, I don't think we're handing out freebies to anyone, the relationship with Veolia is a commercial one, which where we, you know, we protect our interests and they protect theirs, I think that's probably fair to say, isn't it? Were you indicating, Alexi? So, yeah, Tim first then.
A couple of things, obviously, very high, my priority list is food waste collection, so something I think needs to be a high priority that we look at. Secondly, where you're saying the, number three, new legislation hostile vehicle mitigation etcetera, funding source has not been identified, haven't we just identified it with green permits in the city centre for cars to drive around and potentially crash into barriers and things? Wouldn't this be a, wouldn't this be a source that we should be looking at potentially for that one to identify?
I'm just going to throw my question on this since it's come up. I mean, I was under the question, we already had plans for some HVM to go in that had been funded, so it's not, there's no funding for it, it's just there probably isn't funding for all that we might think is appropriate to do. My question on that though is, look, it strikes me that we've taken an approach to pedestrianising parts of the city centre that is a little bit piecemeal and therefore we have, I mean, Division Street comes to mind, we've got kind of little bits of pedestrianisation followed by little bits of highway and that when we do that and we want to mitigate against hostile vehicles, we're going to need to do lots of it and is there any sense in which we might, obviously probably a matter for TRC rather than ourselves, have a look at the cohesiveness of the pedestrianisation in the city centre and say, actually, can we just have this bit pedestrianised and, you know, traffic outside it and think about how that affects the perimeter that needs to be protected? Is that, is that a piece of work that we can do?
There will be a report coming to March as Wasting Street See that will outline our approach so far about hostile vehicle mitigation measures and how we are trying to identify and prioritise the work around that, but clearly part of that is about how we deliver that and currently, you're right, it's this piecemeal arrangements in place but they are through the sort of developments of the city centre, so things like active travel measures are included where they are creating public spaces. So it is something that's part of our considerations, but yes, we can do more work and I'll do more work to join that up in terms of the sort of vision of city centre regeneration.
Okay, thanks. Mark?
Yeah, one thing I'm mindful of, Chair, is we do have a lot of businesses still in the city centre and part of the issues we have around Division Street and others is allowing stock delivery, the very large vehicles that we make, the mitigations against being used by people with bad intentions are the ones we still need to somehow facilitate getting into the city centre and they can't automatically do that at six o'clock in the morning. So, yeah, we do need a report on this, we need to understand exactly how we can best do this going forward because it's a somewhat complex area, isn't it, for sure?
Yes, let's not try and design it now though. Okay, sorry, Alexi, have I come to you yet? Yeah, okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. So I've got a few questions and firstly, item two, does that still need to be there as we applied for the, to opt out of that and that's been accepted? That's the, sorry, new burdens funding from the government, the new legislation to waste, changes to waste collection, that's the first point, does that still need to be in there? I suppose it could still be on there because potentially we could opt in any time, so okay, that's fine. The second one, item three, I think it's really important to say something around making sure that accessibility is maintained in the hostile vehicle mitigation for people that are, you know, with wheelchairs and mobility scooters and also for cyclists as well. And I think, would something like greening the Veolia fleet or Amy Fleet be something that would be part of this capital funding? And would you, I suppose, this is linked to Mark's question, would we inherit the fleet at the end of the contract if we were to move to an electric fleet? And finally, we did discuss in our briefing or the pre-meeting, sorry, about the ANPR camera that's had been beset with problems, do we need more capital, do we need to set aside capital to invest in a new ANPR camera or new ANPR cameras, seeing as that we're expanding the number of school streets and areas that we need to enforce? Thanks.
So I've just come back on a couple of those things, so the, again, a bit about the greening of fleet, again, I don't have the access to the commercial contract but again, we'll be officers to go in and check the requirements on that. I think it's important that what's in here, that's been potentially endorsed today, can be reviewed again at a later stage and I think that's the approach that's being asked, this is kind of ongoing review. So things like the bigger, the larger contracts are obviously things that are still some years away, so we've got time to include and update that in future iterations of this if we need to. On the NPR camera car, again, in terms of the funding of that, there's the potential of funding that from the existing parking budget rather than needing to. of funding that from the existing parking budget rather than needing to bring it as a capital strategy. So again, we've got officers doing work on that at the moment in terms of kind of regular replacement of that vehicle, which is coming to be needed now, yeah.
I mean, the fleet question, if I can jump in, it strikes me, it's probably the same question for all the fleets, you know, under the council. There was a debate at the Finance Committee last year where we had fleet decisions to make, and for most of the vehicles, it was still diesel vehicles that the council was buying, partly because of the cost and partly because in some cases the right kind of vehicle wasn't available. So, I mean, in a sense, I think we stand ready to put money into cleaner vehicles if and when we have that money, which we don't have, do we, frankly? So it's one of those things that, you know, you can get a carbon and air quality saving, it's straightforward in principle how you do it, if you have the money to do it. We stand ready. Where that money is ever going to come from? Well, it takes a political decision probably higher up than here, and probably higher up than anywhere in the council, to say that's what we want to happen. Is that right, or is that sort of failing our responsibilities to net zero? I don't know. No comment on that. Okay, fair enough. Anything else on the, on the, Mark?
I guess it follows on from your chair thought there, Chair. And so much, we've seen over the last couple of years, government giving out very short notice for the ability to bid into pots of money that they make discretionally available. We've always suspected to their pet councils excluding us from prior warning. That's probably just me being paranoid, though. So are we confident that within the portfolio, we have those bids written such that if funding does come available for new green vehicles, that we can get them? Or is that something we've not really done at this stage to access opportunist pots of funding?
I'm really sorry, I don't have the detail about whether we've got those written across the council's fleet, particularly most of our fleet, so it's in transport services, in operational services. So again, I can go in and see further information.
I'll come to you second, Alexi. I think it's an excellent point, Mark. It's not just our service, it's the sort of thing you would say, fleet questions in general, council, look, we stand ready to do this. You know, if the government suddenly turned around tomorrow and said, hey, we've got a £28 billion green investment fund, then, you know, so hey, well, this is something we could do with that money, that would be marvellous. Alexi?
Yeah, it was just on that point. For council, they'd previously vote to have a corporate opportunities register and for offices to be like, looking for those sort of opportunities. And I think it's been incorporated into the risk register, so hopefully that will be.
Marvelous. Right. Anything else on this, or can we agree the capital strategy? I think that's, I think, nods all round, I'll take that as the agreement of the meeting to that. Okay. Item 11, glyphosate reduction trial date. Would you like to introduce yourself and the report? Thank you.
Yes, hi, I'm Mohamed Edwards, I'm the Assistant Director for Highways Maintenance.
As you say, welcome. I think it's your first time at the committee, so taking the new position. So you've taken over from Diviner, who's still with us, I think, temporarily, but you are now the go-to person for all of our many, many highways complaints. So it's, so welcome.
Thank you. So the paper for today is proposing a phased approach to reducing glyphosate usage across the city as a weed killer. So until relatively recently, glyphosate was a primary use as a weed killer for all areas across the city's highway network. Earlier trials had been conducted, and this was spread out into two phases, as agreed at September 2021 Policy Committee and rolled out in 2022. The first phase of the plan was a cessation of glyphosate across the city in shrub beds, rose beds and planted areas, as well as formation of mowing strips. The second phase was to implement a weed killer free neighbourhood, targeting specifically the Brinkliffe area in Sheffield, and this was due in 2022. The conclusions arising from phase one was that the reduction of glyphosate was viable, but it was recognised that there would be some significant cost to that. The phase two was inconclusive, primarily because of intervention from local business owners and residents in the area of Brinkliffe. In 2023, it was agreed to proceed with a further two-year trial, and whilst this was agreed in autumn, no notable spraying activities have taken place. So it was proposed to continue a citywide reduction by implementing a limited trial of the glyphosate free system. Now, that was discussed in September 2023 and was agreed to come back and discuss what the plans will be going forward. Now, in terms of going forward, what this paper is proposing is a, again, a two-phased approach to continuing the phased reduction of glyphosate across the city. So that would be the first phase, which would go up to December 2025, and that would consist of reducing glyphosate by carrying out limited trials through 2024 and up to 2025 of glyphosate, and using glyphosate to target specifically hard surfaces and spot areas, with non-glyphosate weed killer to be targeting all other areas. In parallel to that, a more detailed costing exercise will take place, and an assessment of the environmental implications will be undertaken. And this will then be reported back to committee in December 2025. The second phase would consist of an agreement at this committee, where we decide to proceed with a further three-year trial of maintaining areas of highway network using alternate measures of glyphosate free material. And this will continue, this will proceed from January 2026 up to January 2029. So yeah, that's the proposal that stands.
Thank you. I mean, just, yeah, just to clarify, I mean, we're talking about, there's two elements here, there's the trial of the foam stream system, which obviously we need to do the trial, see how it works, see what the kind of costs are, what the environmental impacts are, and how that compares. The general citywide phased reduction, attempted reduction, I mean, I just, what will the people, what difference will that make in terms of what people will notice in terms of weeds, in terms of the, you know, the fabric of the pavements and so on? What impact is that going to have? Because I am conscious that some authorities have tried to reduce glyphosate dramatically and have had some dramatic problems. Are we proposing to do that? Are you proposing that we do that here? Or is it, you know, can you clarify? Thank you.
So what we're proposing at this stage, because we know glyphosate is an effective weed killer, so the plan is to continue to proceed with glyphosate. Foam stream is a material that we're, is a system that we're proposing to trial. Now, that has been trialled in other councils, and it's mentioned in the paper as well that it wasn't carried forward by other councils. Now, whilst we have trialled it to date in phase one, as I mentioned, there was an acknowledgement that it was effective to the degree that we could reduce the usage of glyphosate as well. Now, in terms of the question about its impact, now, as far as my knowledge takes me, is that it is recognised that glyphosate itself has some mild effects on people in terms of what they sense and smell, and it does create a minor irritation. Now, notwithstanding that, it's not being outlawed in this country, yeah? But we do acknowledge that the government is looking at, will review that in December 2025 as well. In terms of its effects, I couldn't possibly tell you in terms of what the effect, the impact of foam through would be. What we know is from previous data is that there has been some effect, and we just want to carry that forward and kind of roll that out with more broader kind of implementation.
I've seen, Mark, I'll come to you second, but, so, I mean, I'm just, I suppose I'm slightly concerned, if other authorities have trialled foam stream and then not taken it forward, do we understand why that is? Have we designed our trial so we can find something out about it that they didn't find out? What's, you know, what we're going to learn from this?
Right, okay. Now, I couldn't, I don't know, well, I couldn't tell you what the other local authorities' findings were, unfortunately. I can go back, go away and then kind of report back on that, because that's.
I think, yeah, I think possibly, apologies, you've just arrived, you've been landed in this, we probably needed to, I mean, we've spoken to other officers about this, who possibly have looked at other authorities, but I do, you know, I do hope we can be clear on that, if you can take that away, so that we're clear that we are going to learn something from the trial. Mark, and then Christine.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for bringing the report and welcome to the role. It's a difficult brief for you to take on, so good luck, I wish you well. I broadly welcome the approach that we're doing of not making dogmatic decisions and then having to rail back against them as others have done, but actually experimenting and seeing what we can do and what is within the art of the possible. So I think we're approaching it in roughly the right direction. I think some of Joe's questions may have hinted at where there's unintended consequences of the reduction of herbicides and such like, where you're getting degradation of roadways and pathways, which could have unintended consequences of discriminating against poorer areas of the city. Where we've done the trial and others decided to come out and spray glyphosate, that's because they didn't want to see a reduction in their public amenities or damage to the pavements. If in poorer areas, you can't particularly afford to go out and spray yourself, then you're going to have to put up with poor pavements due to weeds growing through them. I think these are issues that we need to be cognizant of as we go forward, so I think it is absolutely appropriate. I'm not entirely convinced by foam stream myself, I think there are issues by diversity implications, because you put it on to a weed, it's going to kill any plant, any bugs that are on there. So, but we need to explore this to make sure for ourselves, because what others find and what Sheffield find may be slightly different. So I think it's appropriate that we do continue doing this. One of the things that I've often thought about, and I know there's significant cost and possibly financially, but also carbon cost increases, the mechanical elements of it, because we're looking at chemicals, because they're cheaper, they're easier to administer, you don't need as many staff, you can cover larger areas very quickly. I've often wondered, though there is a greater cost to us, both in terms of finances of employing people and, yes, transporting people around, do we think it is viable to actually just have more people going out with the small-scale goats mechanically removing weeds, while also having people going out, not necessarily burning weeds, but using hand tools and such like to rip weeds out of pavements and gutters? And also, that also comes back to another element of the AMI contract and its compliance of where AMI are allowing build-up of plant material and rotting down vegetation on the edges of our curbs, both on the road and in the gutters, but also on the pavements where they're coming up to private properties. That will encourage weed seeding and then degradation of our pavements. Are we sure that AMI are keeping our pavements clear of leaves and such like, and detritus that encourage weed growth? Because there's multiple elements that could feed in here, not just removal intervention, but prevention interventions. But obviously, you knew to the post, so I'm not expecting to have all the answers there, just kind of like laying out some things for us to explore going forward.
Yes, and thank you as well for welcoming me. In terms of the alternative materials and systems to be used, that's something we will also be looking at as well, and that's part of the proposal as well. So what we said is part of phase two, we want to look at alternative systems as well as foam stream, which we're currently looking at. So we're keeping that open as well. The alternative methods as well to use alongside these systems, such as, like you said, mechanical removal and other forms of, you know, chemical treatment, et cetera. This is something that we, we've already had, you know, we've looked at at high level, and the previous papers highlight that there's some significant cost impacts associated with those. And one of the things that we want to target going towards 2025, December 2025, is being able to have a more refined approach, refined kind of approach, understanding what the cost implications would be, given that it was only a high-level cost that we produced at that early stage. But yes, these are all options that we do need to look at, you know, and how effective we can be to be managing the weed system as well. And regarding the statement about AMI, you're right, it's something I will have to look into as we, in terms of my role as the Assistant Director, and how we work with AMI to be more effective in these areas.
Thank you, and welcome. Mine is just about the mowing strips, really, the first phase, because I do fully understand the need to keep the pavements and the places where people walk free of vegetation. I just want to make sure that you're not going to increase again or go back to spraying these ridiculous massive deserts around trees and street furniture and things, because I think they were what really upset a lot of residents. I know in my area is, you know, we don't mind if there's a bit of weeds around a tree or something. So I guess really, I'm just saying, what will it look like? And, you know, you've said it's not possible to completely eliminate it, and I agree for safety, we have to make the pavements clear, but I'm quite keen that we keep things like shrub beds and rose beds and most of the mowing strips free of glyphosate. So is that what is going to continue?
So what we're proposing at this stage is, we'll use foam stream generally, but with glyphosate, it will be more targeted. So when we do go into these areas of mowing strips and around trees, it will be, you know, we'll use glyphosate, but it will be very, it will be spot treatment rather than that blanket treatment that you're referring to. So that's how we're approaching it at this stage in our trial. And we'll review that as we approach December 2025.
Alexi.
Thank you. I've got a question and then just a brief comment that sort of think follows on from what Mark was saying. This graph on page 69 that shows our usage of glyphosate, it looks a nice big drop. Can we expect outside the trials for that to continue? Or is it likely to turn around and go back up again? Or where do we expect that graph to go? And my comment is around the trials, in particular when you get to the sort of the second stage from 2026, is I think it's important that the trial areas cover different geographic and demographic parts of the city, because our city has lots of different climates and lots of different types of environments. So I do think we need to try it in different parts of the city.
Now, in terms of the graph, the aspiration certainly is to see that continue, you know, in its downward trajectory with glyphosate. But I couldn't comment in terms of, or commit in terms of how that's going to go going forward. We need to, you know, one of the objects of the trial is to see how we, you know, how successful it is and how effective it is. So I'll be a bit more cautious to be committed to design to that at this stage, especially given the fact I'm just picking this up in my role now. And in terms of your comment about the demographics, and I take note of that, that's something we will look at as well in terms of how we roll out the phase two trials certainly.
Next, Mike.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mohamed, for this report. It really is encouraging to see such a dramatic drop in the use of glyphosate. It really is encouraging to see such a dramatic drop in the use of glyphosate. Got it down to well under half of what was being used back in 2021. Do have a slight niggel because I do know that members have been calling for a drop in its usage well before then. But it's definitely been going on the right track. Appreciate that there. It may be difficult in driving that down further, but hopefully we will see that in the coming years. It's really, no, it's just been really good to see the progress that's been made so far. And I think you've got the committee's full support in trying to drive it down further. I think the scientific evidence is quite conclusive on the ill effects it has been having on wildlife as well as other plant species. So I think this report is going to be welcomed and accepted by all. Thank you.
Thanks. Was that a question? Was it just a comment, I think? Endorsement, excellent. I'd like to wrap this up without extending the meeting if we can. So, Tim?
Yeah, I'm one of those people who is calling for its reduction for many years since my election to council. But I understand that they are potentially limits because if you then use something else that is worse potentially for the environment, it increases carbon emissions, et cetera, then there is that balance to be made. The downward drive has been very welcome and it's good to see. And it's good to see that we're looking at other ways that, you know, that we can better target it. So that when we do have to use glyphosate in the absence of other realistic solutions, then, you know, it's with heavy heart that we have to, that has to continue. But obviously, you know, it's making sure that the balance is made and that's where the decisions are here. So I think you're doing the right thing.
Excellent. Thank you. So I don't see any more hands. So can we move to the recommendations on page 66? Are those agreed by members? I'll take silence as the assent of the meeting. Yep, that is agreed. Thank you very much. I believe that concludes our business for today. Thank you everybody for attending, members and officers. And I hope you found it an interesting morning to the people at home. Take care now.
We finished early.
Sorry?
And we finished early.
And we finished, yeah, yeah, we finished within our time limit. Marvelous. Right. Cheerio. See you next time.